Good evening, councillors and members of the public gallery. Before we commence the meeting, just draw your attention to the file regulations which are on the screen behind me. The emergency exits one, two and three. Don't use the lift on the way out. Can I ask you all to switch your mobile phones to off or to silent and let's get on with it. I'd ask Emma for the minutes of the meeting that took place on the 6th of July. They've been on over thirty minutes, are you content I sign these as a correct record? Thank you. Apologies for absence, Emma.
We have apologies from councillors Jed Hall, Simon Inchbold and Carol King. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Declarations of interest, any members declared before the meeting?
None before the meeting, but I believe Hazlemead Town councillors declare a non-perceval interest.
Thank you very much. Members, questions? Emma, any from the public?
None, thank you, chairman.
Thank you. Relevant updates, government guidance and legislation, Peter Cleveland.
Thank you, chairman. I just thought it was a point to just update on the draft local plan. Members will be aware that on the 19th of July, full council agreed to publication of the draft local plan. The six-week publication of the local plan is now agreed to the 19th of August, which you'll be aware or you'll become aware very soon. Once published, officers will start to make specific reference to relevant policies within the draft plan and will provide advice on weight that can be given to relevant policies within the plan in determining planning applications that come before you. The Planning Practice Guidance provides advice in this regard and draft policies will only attract weight or begin to carry additional weight as it works through the plan process. At this stage, the emerging local plans policy carry limited weight in decision-making, but they do carry some. Following the consultation period, once we have had an idea of what level of objection is, if there's policies that haven't received a high level of objection, those policies will carry greater weight to some of the policies that have got significant objection to and will keep you updated and advise you accordingly following that period. It's not considered that any of the applications before committee tonight would conflict with the draft plan as we go forward, therefore is advised that each application must be considered in accordance with the 2002 local plan, the MPPF and a relevant adopted guidance. Within the reports before or the report before you tonight, as I say, there's no reference specifically to policies, but going forward, next committees, you will see some reference to specific policies and where relevant, an evaluation of a scheme against that in addition to the current adopted policies. So hopefully that's useful and I'm happy to take any specific questions on that at this stage.
Thank you very much, Peter. Turning now to planning enforcement, I ask Beth Hans Smith to introduce this item.
Thank you, chairman. So this report provides members with an update on planning enforcement performance for the quarter of April to June. The site-specific updates for the southern area start on page eight. I've got nothing further to add to those two site updates. So if I then turn to the statistics and correct with apologies the heading there, you'll note that in the quarter April to June, we closed double the number of cases than in the previous quarter and similarly, we opened about double the amount of cases than the previous quarter. Our cases on hand reduced and actually at the close of business today, it was at 157. You'll note at the bottom of page nine, at table three, our performance against the performance indicator remains high and broadly comparable to the same quarter last year. The rest of the report is for noting and I am happy to answer any questions. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, Beth. Any questions? councillor Edwards.
Thank you, chairman. With regard to the cases received, why was it 106 cases? Was there any particular type of case? Was there a reason for that or did we change the system? What was the reason for it?
Thank you, chairman. I don't know in short, councillor Edwards. I think it's going to be something to do with the weather. People start building more, people start cutting down hedges and development becomes more visible. I'm afraid, I mean, there doesn't seem to be any sort of pattern. Yeah.
Please do, Jim.
Can I come back again? Right, going to the bottom of page nine. Now, the April to June figure for this year is particularly high, same as last year, particularly Is there a reason for that? When you compare it to the others, you know, double or triple nearly, there must be, is it something to do with staffing or something? What is it?
They're probably clearing their desks before they go on holiday. Sorry, sorry, Beth.
Thank you, chairman. I know that there were, there was a staffing shortage in those three months because Victoria was acting up in my absence, which created a vacancy. So there was a series of acting up. So I suspect it's largely down to that, but we have caught up. Thank you, chairman. I think Peter might want to add something.
Thank you, chairman. Just sorry, just to add, so in that quarter, we also closed a lot of older files as well that had been hanging around. So they're obviously significant ones that we actually managed to get a resolution on. So they impacted on our statistics and that's what we reported last time on those statistics. Thank you, chairman.
Can I come back then? So do you make a particular decision to try and close as many cases as you can between April and June each year? Because it's the same last year as it is this year, that's what I'm saying to you.
Okay, chairman, no, there's no intent to do it. We will close a file as soon as we're able to and it's just, that is a trend that seems to have appeared. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you. So, members, the report to note. Is that agreed? Thank you very much. We move on to applications for planning permission. In the event of any site inspection being necessary as a result of consideration of this meeting, beheld on Tuesday, the 30th of August, it's time to be agreed. Moving on to planning applications, item A1 WA 2016 oblique 1032, erection of a dwelling at 31 Hill Road, Hazlemead, GU 272 NH. Rebecca to introduce this one, please.
Thank you, chairman. The site is located on the southern side of Hill Road, within the developed area of Hazlemead. The site comprises an area of land which originally formed part of the amenity space of number 31 Hill Road. There is a detached outbuilding in the eastern corner of the site and the land levels slope down from the road to the south and the west. The surrounding area is residential in character. There is close board fencing along the northern and western site boundaries and established vegetation to the south and east. The neighbouring building to the south, which comprises 29 and 29A Hill Road, is a Grade Two listed building. The neighbouring Grade Two listed building can be seen in the top-left photograph. This photograph also shows the existing detached outbuilding within the site. The neighbouring property to the west of the site, which is number 31 Hill Road, can be seen in the top-right photograph and the site itself can be seen in the bottom photograph. The top two photographs show the street scene. The top left is taken from outside the site looking east and the top right is taken looking west. The bottom photograph is taken within the site, looking towards the main road, Hill Road. This photograph shows the difference in land levels. Permission is sought for the erection of a detached chalet bungalow with associated amenity space and parking space to the front of the dwelling. The dwelling would be set back from the road and would have an L-shaped footprint. The proposed dwelling would have a width of 9.6 metres, a depth of 5.8 metres and a ridge height of 6.8 metres. There would be a separation distance of 18.5 metres between the proposed dwelling and number 29 Hill Road to the south and a distance of nine metres to the neighbouring number 31 to the west. The proposal would utilise the site access off Hill Road, which was granted permission under a previous application in 2013. There is a tree protected by a TPO in the eastern corner of the site, which would be retained as part of the application. The proposed dwelling would feature dormer windows in the front roof slope with a catslide roof to the rear. The external materials would be colour washed rendering with tile creasing above the front windows, plain clay tile roofs, roof tiles rather, and white painted joinery. The dwelling would have an internal floor space of 88 square metres. It would provide for a kitchen dining area, lounge, WC and study at ground floor and two en suite bathrooms at first floor level. So this slide shows the street scene from Hill Road and the site access can be seen with the neighbouring properties either side. This is a computer-generated image of what the proposed dwelling would look like with parking space provided outside and surrounded amenity space. Members will recall that there have been previous applications seeking permission for a dwelling on the site. The most recent, WA 2015 1957, was refused at the council's Southern Area Committee in January this year. It was concluded that by virtue of its size and juxtaposition with the neighbouring property, the proposed dwelling would result in a loss of open character and a cramped appearance which would be harmful to the character of the street scene and visual amenity of the area. This slide shows a comparison of the proposed block plans, the top three being previously refused schemes, with the current scheme shown at the bottom. The differences between the current proposal and that of the previously refused schemes are that a garage is not proposed as part of the current scheme, the proposed dwelling has been reduced in scale and mass and there is a subsequent reduction in floor area, the orientation of the proposed dwelling has changed and the previously proposed gable projection under 2015 1957 has been replaced with a catslide roof at first floor level. The reduction in size, bulk and form of the proposed dwelling can be seen in the elevational drawings shown on the screen. So the ones on the left being the previously, most recent refused scheme with the current scheme and showing the removal of the gable projection and replacement with a catslide roof. The differences in terms of footprints, height, width and depth of the proposed dwelling can be seen in the table on the screen. Whilst the height, width and depth of the current scheme is similar to that of the most recently refused scheme, the removal of the previously proposed two-storey gable projection has resulted in a reduction of overall floor space. The proposed dwelling would be within the developed area and would contribute in a small way towards the borough's housing need. It would be of an acceptable scale, form and design and officers consider that the proposed dwelling would not appear cramped and it would be of a suitable size for the plot and would not detract from the spacious character of the area. There would be no material harm to residential amenity and sufficient amenity and parking space would be provided. Whilst the proposed orientation of the dwelling would not likely relate to the access of the neighbouring listed building, this minimal harm is considered to be outweighed by the benefits of providing a new dwelling in a sustainable location. In conclusion, officers consider that sufficient changes have been made to the proposal to overcome the objections in relation to the previously refused scheme. So the matters therefore of technical opinion are the principal of development, housing land supply, effect on the SPA, highways and impact on the setting of the adjacent listed building. The matters of judgment are impact on visual amenity, residential amenity, trees and the standard of accommodation and provision of amenity and play space. Thank you, chairman.
Rebecca, thank you very much for that. I now turn to the public speaking and can I introduce Mr Ray, who speaks as an objector, to this application. And I remind you that this is to be an address that addresses, sorry, the planning application that we're considering, not one that we might consider and no inflammatory comments, please, for officers, members or myself. So, Mr Ray, thank you very much. You have four minutes when you start.
Yes, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I live at Hammackham, which is opposite the proposed dwelling. As you've heard, the site has had a significant planning history. The government inspector in his appeal decision in 2014, which dismissed two previous applications, referred to the residential area surrounding the site, and I quote, "as largely surrounded by buildings of considerable presence and character in a generally spacious setting." He also referred to the predominantly large detached houses in large plots. These previous applications were dismissed as they appeared incongruously cramped and out of scale and keeping in context, they would erode the spatial quality of the area and detract unacceptably from the setting of the listed building which looks over the site. So now turning to the current proposal, which seeks to take account of the inspector's findings and for the reasons for refusal of the more recent application, 2015 oblique 1957. In order to deal with the issues of appearing cramped and the juxtaposition with neighbouring properties, three principal changes have occurred. Firstly, this proposal is now even smaller than previous proposals and secondly, the proposed dwelling is now positioned side on to the road. In the opinion of the neighbourhood objectors, these changes make the proposed dwelling appear even more out of scale, keeping in context with the surrounding area. If this application is allowed, it indicates that it is perfectly acceptable to tuck small detached houses side on in between large buildings of considerable presence and character, thereby completely changing the street scene and visual amenity. Thirdly, unlike the previous failed application, as has been mentioned, the access has been aligned to the frontage of Hill Road and number 31 and not to the listed building, which is set at quite an angle to Hill Road. The heritage officer has stated that any proposal should relate to the access of the listed building rather than to Hill Road in order to make the visual connection between the two. This was also clearly the inspector's preference and this point has been ignored in this proposal. In conclusion, in the opinion of the neighbourhood objectors, this proposal would adversely affect the character and appearance of the area, would erode its spatial quality and is completely out of scale with the presence and character of the large surrounding buildings situated in spacious plots. And due to being set at the wrong angle, it also detracts from the listed building. The objectors would therefore respectfully request that you refuse the application. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr Ray. Members. councillor Muller.
Thank you, chairman. It's very nice to have much of what I was going to say already said for me. I call this in because I felt that the key points of the proposal were very similar to the ones of the previously refused ones. I also felt that in view of certain developments, and by that I with a very small D, in terms of the local plan and the Hazelmead neighbourhood plan, there had been some changes there which were relevant to this application. But turning to the main things, I have a question for the officers. I noticed two things. One, I think if you go back to the CGI image, that's actually of the previous application, isn't it? It's not of this, this one, because that was one where the applicant was, in my view, creditably trying to make the building look more like the listed building and had turned it at an angle, so it was felt to be more in keeping with it. And the, Mr Ray was quite right to refer to the fact that the inspector, Mr Monday, in the 2014 appeal drew specific attention to the different orientations or axes of the two proposals subject to the appeal. So he didn't find either of them particularly impressive as being subservient to the main building, but he felt the one which was placed, if you like, parallel to the road was less so. And of course, that orientation is not the one we're actually being asked to consider tonight. So can officers just confirm that I'm right about that?
If I can answer the first query about the visual CGI, the building would actually appear the same in this scheme as the previous scheme from that front. And if you look, turn to page 15 of your agenda report, the image is actually taken from the north-western corner looking towards that building. I appreciate the angle does appear like it is at an angle from there.
Sorry, can we be clear? I think the axis of this building is not the same as the one of the previous application earlier this year.
No, that's right, yes, that's right.
My second question is that on the list of technical matters and judgmental matters, I saw the setting of the listed building was in the technical matters. Are we not really entitled to have a view on that, particularly given the comments made by the previous inspector on orientation?
Thank you, chairman. Thank you, councillor Muller. Perfectly entitled to take a view. We obviously take historic buildings officers' view and that is our technical advice to members, but it is your consideration, you can take an alternate view, but the professional advice from council's planning historic buildings officer is there for you. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you. It's interesting when the council's technical officer and inspector disagree and certainly my own feeling is that the second point which the inspector made about this plot being one which was not large enough to contain a building of suitable size to compare to the other ones, and if you put a small one there, you then simply produce something which is out of keeping with the local spacious area, seems to me a classic catch-22 position. And although I might normally have some sympathy with an owner developer in that position, I can't help remembering that when the 3031 buildings were erected, I think we were assured there'd be no further building and the whole point was that the applicant purchased the extra parcel to push that building further away and so maintain the spacious character. So while it may not be a direct planning matter, I do feel that it's a factor which doesn't make one unduly sympathetic to trying to put an extra building in there. However, I think we do have to be aware of the housing supply context and while I agree with the officer that taking the borough as a whole, we are obviously putting forward a local plan trying to meet our objectively assessed need, I think as the Southern Area Planning Committee, we're entitled to look at the Hazlemead position and with another hat to do with Hazlemead vision and the neighbourhood plan, I've been keeping an eye on how things are going. And I think it's relevant just to spell out that now that the local plan has been formally approved in its pre-submission state, Hazlemead's allocation is 830 for the 19 years from 1st of April 2013 to 31st of March 2032. And in the three and a third years it have elapsed, almost exactly 100 homes have been completed and almost 300 have received permission. And in addition to the five strategic sites which are in the local area assessment, the further 216 homes are planned, which leaves, which adds up to just over 600 and therefore leaves us with the need to find a little less than 230 over 15 and a half years, a rate of 15 per annum, which is not very high in itself. But when you compare it to what's happening at the moment, particularly aided by change of use applications, we're actually running, going back to the beginning of the plan period at 42 per annum. And in fact, in the last year and a half, when these changes of uses without planning permission hit their stride, it's now actually at 67 per annum. So I think we're entitled to take account of the fact that in terms of Hazlemead meeting its allocation of 830, we have no problems whatsoever. Indeed, our issue will be how many more than that actually get developed. And the neighbourhood plan is actually proposed to have a windfall control policy in it in an attempt to bring some level of control over the total number of buildings that are developed. And in that, we draw a distinction between changes of use, which although they have some very worrying effects on local retail activity, do not tend to change the general look of the area very much, whereas those which are infill developments do. And I would certainly expect that infill developments would get less sympathetic treatment if this policy comes into play. But it leads me to feel that with Hazlemead's situation being what it is, I can think of no convincing reasons why I should differ from the inspector's view or this committee's view on what is a very similar development. If you look at the table on page 25, the footprint is actually two metres, two square metres larger. The floor area is indeed 10 square metres less, but that's the entire development. The height is marginally higher and the width and the other depth are the same. In terms of its impact on the character of the area, I'm afraid I'm unable to agree that it'll be sufficiently different to make me feel I should change my view from the one I expressed in January. And so subject to what I hear from my colleagues, I shall not be able to support the officer's recommendation.
Councillor Edwards.
Thank you, chairman. I remember this application very well for 3133 and I was assured at that planning meeting that 31's garden would be a garden and there would be no development on that space. And that was the only reason that I voted in support of that application. I remember there being quite a large listed protected tree on the site which has been removed. If you look, can we look at the picture of the site, please? As it is at present time? Yeah, there you are. Now, that is not a garden. I'm sorry, there's no way that that is a garden. It's fenced off, it's got an entrance onto Hill Road and it is obvious what the owner wanted to do with it from day one and we were misinformed. The situation we now have is that we're saying that we have a CFA Voices-style building. Well, fine, okay, but it's too small, it's out of context. The principle of the development, there are no principles here. We were assured that there wouldn't be any building on this site. And here we are, third time round, having another proposal. It's out of scale, out of context, the sitting of the listed building is paramount here. I can understand why objectors are objecting. There's lots of things wrong and very, very little right about this building and it's completely against the Hazlemead design statement. And I will not be supporting this application under any circumstances. Thank you.
Thank you, chairman. I remember this coming up recently too, but I wasn't around when permission was granted for the two semi-detached houses to the right of the plot to the western side. And I do agree with colleagues that it is a pity that this site has been allowed to degrade to its present condition. And in a sense, I'm minded to say I have no objection because it would be better than the present situation because it's an eyesore. Although I have sympathy with the gentleman who spoke from the public who lives opposite, I imagine it's not very pleasant looking across the road at this eyesore of a site. But may I ask a question of the officers? If we refuse this application again, can we insist that it is, that it becomes a garden and the fence between it and 31 and the fence between it and 31 is removed or is that not possible?
Louise.
Unfortunately, no, we wouldn't be able to. They can erect the fence, which they have done under permitted development rights and there was no control that this should be a garden area for the semi-detached dwelling.
You mean we can't insist it's a garden? In which case, I must say firstly, I think the listed building forfeited its rights when it presumably many decades ago sold off the land that we're talking about and there was a very high hedge hiding the listed building. I think it's been subsequently removed or lowered. And I think the mistake was made, it's easy to blame the past, isn't it, particularly when you weren't around? The mistake was made when permission was granted to 31 next door. Given the present situation, unless I hear convincing arguments to the contrary, I'm minded to approve. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. councillor Mullner, if you want to come back.
If I could, thank you Chairman. I have great respect for councillor Round's views on most things. I'm not really convinced, I've been doing my job as a planning councillor, if I responded to every developer who let something go in order to persuade us to grant planning permission. The name Undershore springs to mind, where the owner did exactly that, indeed in a rather more dramatic fashion, and it's ended up being used for a positive purpose. It is unfortunate when, I say we don't have eyes peering enough forward, I don't know whether we could have insisted at the time of 3133 in insisting that that land be part of the curtilage of 31. If that had been a condition, if it would have therefore fulfilled the undertaking that councillor Edwards remembers, it would have been a much better situation. But I'm afraid I'm not convinced at all that simply because someone is prepared at the moment to do nothing. We do have powers, we are able actually as a council to insist that a landowner keeps land in reasonable condition. Section 259 springs to mind, if the officers can remind me. So it's not as if it has to remain a complete eyesore, we can do something about it if we feel strongly about it.
Thank you. Could also say that dereliction is not a reason for granting planning permission. councillor Hess.
I may be out of betray ignorance, but I really can't see what difference this application has from the last one. There's been a small change, but it's cosmetic. There's nothing fundamentally changes in this application.
Thank you councillor. Just going through the conditions again, I think one is missing, if I might say. While condition 10 talks about no development till the construction, transport, management plans there, parking of vehicles etcetera, there is nothing in the conditions that says the limitation on times. As I was called out on Sunday at seven o'clock when a Lithuanian builder was hammering away in a certain house in Hindhead, I'm quite anxious that we restrict our building times. Is that condition to be added?
Thank you Chairman. Yes, that condition could be added in the event that the recommendation was accepted and apologies, it was missed from me. Thank you.
As you know, it's one of my favourites. Members, anyone else which speak? councillor Piper.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I have to agree to a very large extent with my colleagues on either side of me. Looking at the street scene elevation on page 17, the proposed cottage is totally out of keeping with those properties on either side. And I think just because we've now got an application in front of us whereby in the past we have been assured that nothing would be built on this plot, does not give reason to approve it. I think that there is infinitesimal difference between the current proposal and the one that has, previous one that was refused and I will be supporting councillor Mullner should he put a move to vote against the officer's recommendation.
Thank you councillor Piper. councillor Edwards, you want to come back?
Thank you Chairman. I'd just like to ask the officers here, with regard to this property, if we agreed with the officers and decided to grant planning permission, would the owner be able to increase the size of the property in future under the present legislation?
Thank you Chairman. We've proposed to remove, condition seven on page 42 removes their permitted development rights, so they wouldn't be able to extend it without prior assessment and permission from the council, so that would be controlled. Thank you Chairman.
councillor Mullner, third time?
Point of information, I think we need to be very clear about these things. It's exactly the same condition that was put on the 3133 application. They simply mean that they have to come back for further planning permission if they want to do something different.
Correct. That is the law. Members, I think we've got to that point in time where the recommendations, permission is granted, subject conditions one to 12 plus the condition on hours of work, which will be the standard, Monday to Friday, eight to 1800, Saturday, eight to 1300, no work whatsoever or deliveries on Sundays or bank holidays. And also informatives one to three on pages 39 to 47 of the report. Those in favour of the recommendation to grant, please show.
That's none.
Those against?
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Thank you very much. Abstentions, none. Oh, sorry, two. Beg your pardon. Right, can I have an alternative proposal and reasons please? Proposer and seconder.
councillor Mullner. Could I propose that the application be refused firstly for its impact on the listed building, in particular referring to the change of axis of this application, but secondly and perhaps the more meaty one, its adverse impact by reason of its scale and position on the character and visual amenity of the area.
A seconder please. councillor Piper, thank you. Are there any other conditions to add? Sorry. councillor Carbin.
It's not really a condition, it's just to strengthen what councillor Mullner said in the bullet points on page 21, the wording of the previous inspector is quite good about space and spacious setting.
Or Rebecca? That, yeah.
Thank you Chairman. Right, taking on board the comments, I would suggest two reasons for refusal. The first being the proposal by reason of its sighting and relationship to the neighbouring listed building would result in less than substantial harm to the setting of the listed building. The less than substantial harm would not be outweighed by any public benefits and would therefore conflict with policy HE3 of the local plan and paragraphs 131, 132 and 134 of the MPPF. The second reason, the proposal by virtue of its size and scale in relation to the size of the plot and its relationship with the surrounding area would result in a loss of open character and a cramped appearance which would be harmful to the street scene and the visual amenity of the area, contrary to policies D1 and D4 of the local plan and paragraph 17 of the MPPF. Thank you Jim.
Thank you Rebecca. Is it worth mentioning the Hazelmeir local plan?
No, it's not.
Statement, sorry.
Yes, we can add that into the second reason for refusal.
Thank you very much indeed. We have a recommendation to refuse. Can I have those in favour, please show?
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Those against?
One.
Abstentions?
One.
Thank you. Permission is refused. That completes our meeting. Thank you all very much indeed.